Good afternoon. We'll call the June 2nd Planning Commission meeting to order. And I think before we get started, we're going to have Mr. Andrews give us some housekeeping since we're using technology.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is being done on a conference bridge approach, and so this still is considered to be a public meeting, and we do want to consider this to be open to public participation and comment. And so for the time being, the City of Salina is going to continue to use a conference bridge approach to allow citizens to call in and address the Planning Commission either in a public forum or public comment on an agenda item. And to do that, the participant will need to call into the phone number, which is 785-621-0800. That's 785-621-0800. Then they need to enter a participant code, and that code is 782956 followed by the pound sign. So the participant code is 782956 followed by the pound sign. That will enter them into a conference call where staff, Mr. Hirsch, will see that they entered the call. And if they would like to make a comment during either the public forum or public comment portion of the hearing, they will need to push star nine. That star nine will create an icon showing that they wish to speak, and then staff will unmute the caller and announce their name to the Planning Commission. So we've been going through a number of changes with this approach, and we've learned that sometimes we do have feedback that we think is related on the caller's end. Two things that we are asking of callers is to turn the sound off on any device they are using to watch the meeting and focus on the sound over the phone. Secondly, we ask that the caller not use speakerphone when addressing the board or commission. So just for a reminder, the phone number and code to call in is 785-621-0800 with a participant code of 782956 followed by the pound key. As a reminder to participants who are calling in and also to commissioners at the dais or at your seats, please identify yourself before speaking. If users are listening only over the phone, they will not have a visual cue to know who is speaking. So the best thing to do would just be to say, "This is Commissioner Good," and then follow with whatever question or comment that you have. So that is the preliminaries for how the meeting will operate. Until further notice, Planning Commission meetings will take place via this telephone conference approach. The meetings can be viewed on Access TV either via Cox Cable Channel 20 or online at www.salinatv.org or on the city's YouTube channel. So we are ready for the roll call, and I see that our chair is here, and we had two members, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Eisenhower, that were unable to attend, and one of our youth members, Mr. Campbell, is not here, but we do have a quorum of seven to conduct the meeting.
Mr. Chair, also briefly, I do have my phone out for confirmation. We have a member of staff who's sitting upstairs and is monitoring YouTube and public access and the phone to make sure that it stays consistent and is on, and all three have been confirmed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, as it relates to staff confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided, the packet was posted on Thursday when it went out, and then again today, subsequent to the meeting going out last Thursday, staff received some additional correspondence. And what we have done is done a supplement posting to the original packet that contains that correspondence, which came in from Dr. Justin Hanke, Mr. John Blanchard, and Mr. Don Wendt. And you do have copies of those at your places. And there were two correspondences that came in relating to the application relating to Lowell School that were not included in the packet, and those are at your places as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Are we ready for approval of minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that brings us to new business.
We do have a public hearing continuation under item 3.1, and this is an application that was filed by Salina Christian Academy originally as a straight rezoning application. That request was modified to amend the application to requesting a planned development district R2 on a 2.04 acre site at the southeast corner of Highland and Republic. And the request is to allow the former Lowell Elementary School to be converted to multifamily housing. The original public hearing on this item was February 18th, 2020, and it was continued to allow the applicant to modify their application, and it was scheduled to be heard by the commission at your March 17th meeting, which was canceled. And this is the first meeting that we have had since the shutdown, and so it was placed on your first agenda for the meeting in June. One thing we did want for the benefit of those who may be watching the meeting or listening in, just a summary of things that we have provided the Planning Commission for their review in addition to a staff report and maps. There is, we have provided you with an excerpt of the future land use map that shows what the future land use designation is for this property and the surrounding neighborhood. We've provided a map that shows the surrounding utilities in terms of water, sewer, fire hydrants, that availability. We have provided you with a map that was furnished to us by the applicant, and that map has yellow highlighted properties which are owned by people that are not resident at those properties, which is an indication that those are rental residential properties. There is a site survey that shows the physical conditions on this site. There are building floor plans that show what the internal layout of the Lowell School building is. Item number six is called a PSIQ report, and that is short for Preliminary Site Information Questionnaire. And what the PSIQ is used for is if a property owner or potential developer is attempting to apply for a historic designation on a property, they are required to prepare a PSIQ report which goes to the state Historic Preservation Office, and they review that to see, give an indication of whether they think that property has characteristics that might make it eligible for a historic listing. And the potential purchaser of this property has prepared that report, and we have provided it for you. We have provided a table that shows project densities at some other apartment complexes in the city. And we have excerpts from the comprehensive plan and park master plan that was completed. We provided you with a public notice summary that shows you all the notice that was provided to neighboring property owners, including the posting of three signs on the property to let people outside the 200-foot notification radius be aware. We provided with correspondence from representatives of the Salina Parks Department as regards to this property. We have provided you with a section which is all the written correspondence we have received from residents and citizens. And there's also in your packet a petition that contains 15 pages of signatures that registers their opposition to this request. So we're going to go back just to lay a little bit of background that in 2003 and 2004, there was a downsizing of the number of elementary schools in the USD 305 district as well as a plan to replace the Roosevelt Lincoln Middle School. And what we provided for you on your background in the report on page one and continuing was that Roosevelt Lincoln Middle School was converted to an apartment complex for senior adults. That was the adaptive reuse of that building. The Herthorn Elementary School was first used as an office building following the closure of the school, and then the property was purchased, and a proposal was made to demolish the building and replace it with apartments. And so the Heritage at Hawthorne Apartments on North Ninth Street are on the site of the former Hawthorne Elementary School. The Bartlett Elementary School on South Ninth Street was converted into an office building for a realtor. The Franklin Elementary School was retained and used as a Smoky Hill Education Service Center. The Lowell Elementary School was sold to Salina Christian Academy and used for a private Christian school. Hegeman Elementary School was retained by the school district and used for offices and training. And Parsons Elementary School on East Country Club Road was converted into offices for schooler green. And then we have also pointed out to you some of the zoning actions that the Planning Commission took in response to adaptive reuse of the school buildings. And you'll see that only two district properties, Franklin Elementary School and Lowell Elementary School, had no zoning change, and that was partially because there wasn't a real change in use of those two properties. Most of the changes in zoning classification were to planned districts or planned development districts, meaning that when the Planning Commission reviewed them, they were accompanied by a specific development or redevelopment plan for those properties. And so the Lowell Elementary School was first built in 1915. There was an addition built in 1965. It was closed in 2003. In 1997, it was designated by the City of Salina as a conservation property, which means that the building may not be demolished without the review and approval of the Salina Heritage Commission. It was purchased by Salina Christian Academy in March of 2004. They made a number of repairs and upgrades to the building, but no major modifications or additions are made to the school building. So during its entire history, it was either owned by USD 305 or by Salina Christian Academy, but at no point was it owned by the city or county, and at no point was it a public park. It was a educational facility. The Salina Christian Academy has closed its doors. They have put the property on the market. They have a prospective purchaser who wants to convert the use of the building from educational to residential use specifically to multifamily housing. As the property is zoned R1 single-family residential, there was a request to rezone it from R1 to R3 multifamily residential. At your February 18th meeting, you approved a motion to direct the applicant to resubmit their application as a planned development district, which would allow the Planning Commission to review a specific development proposal and site development plan for the site. And so you do have a site development plan. One of the things I wanted to point out was there are two important things about the amended application. One is that the request was originally for R3, and now the underlying request is R2. That under our zoning code is a large decrease in density. And so under R3, you can have a density up to 43 dwelling units per acre, but R2 limits you to 14 and a half dwelling units per acre. And so there's a prospective buyer, Mr. Brian Richardson, who's interested in converting this building into multifamily housing. And this plan represents his development proposal, which is to develop up to 15 apartment units in the existing school building, construct a parking lot north of the school building with 28 to 30 parking spaces, retain the eastern portion of the property as open space set aside for future development. As to Mr. Richardson's track record, he recently completed the renovation of the Norton Apartments at 111, or 1111, 1115 East Iron. There are 24 apartment units in that project. As part of that, Mr. Richardson sought and obtained approval to list those properties on the National Register of Historic Places. That enabled the project to be eligible for state and federal tax credits, which if you take the state and the federal and stack those on top of each other, you can potentially be eligible for 45% of the project cost, and that allows that to be put into the property as equity and sometimes makes the difference between a feasible or infeasible project. The Roosevelt Lincoln School project also was done with historic tax credits, which was an important part of the financing. So by way of the planned development district review process, staff sometimes refers to it as what you see is what you get zoning. The idea is that what the developer presents as their development plan must be followed, and if they want to deviate or vary from it, they have to come back before the Planning Commission to get their plan amended. So it is intended to represent a firm commitment that actual development will follow whatever site development plan that the Planning Commission might approve. So at this time, the applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan for Phase 1, which is a proposed 15-unit apartment project that is only in the existing school building. And so there's no additions, there's no new buildings proposed as part of that, no changes to the exterior proposed except for some repair and tuck pointing of existing brick. We have provided you with a comparison of the R1 and R2 zoning regulations. The, I think we have a, maybe this one right here, Allison, if you could go to that and just have kind of scroll through this, but the use is for multifamily residential dwellings. There's a minimum lot area requirement, and they have over two acres on their site. And with 15 dwelling units only, they have almost 6,000 dwelling units an acre. And so that's 7.5 units per acre is their proposed density. They meet the minimum lot width and lot depth requirements. That's a summary of the existing setbacks. There's no change that is proposed. The existing building covers 14% of the lot. One thing we would note is that in the R2 district for conditional uses, there's a maximum building height of 50 feet. The applicant is proposing to limit themselves to the existing 25 feet. So if this were just rezoned to straight R2 zoning, then someone could build a building that was 50 feet tall, but the proposal here is to limit the maximum height to 25 feet. We have determined that 30 parking spaces would be required for the 15 units. There's a requirement for a parking lot buffer along the parking lot adjacent to the street, and there would be a requirement for a buffer along the east where the apartment site abuts the residential properties to the east. So I think you're familiar with the site. Under the current R1 zoning, the building could be used as-is for a school, a church, a group daycare center and/or a community center through a conditional use permit application. Or the school building could be removed if the Heritage Commission would so approve, and the site could be redeveloped for single-family homes or as a public park under the existing R1 zoning. The applicant believes that the current R1 zoning limits the potential reuses of the building, and if you look at some of the reuses of the other school buildings, most of those involve some form of zoning change to allow for adaptive reuse of the building. So the staff would agree that the current R1 zoning designation would prevent the building from being converted to multifamily housing or offices, and those are two of the most common uses of abandoned schools that we have seen in the community. The other thing that we would note is that the school site is currently privately owned property. In order to convert all or a portion of this two-acre site to a park, there would need to be a public or not-for-profit entity to own and manage the park. The Salina Parks and Recreation Department has not expressed an interest in owning and managing a neighborhood park or pocket park in this location, and there is correspondence attached in your packet from Park Superintendent Rick Martin that addresses that. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R2 zoning. So one of the things about this modified request is by requesting R2 zoning, it is more compatible with the entire, with the surrounding area because on the west side of Santa Fe, between Republic and Beloit, that's all zoned R2 except for the school site. And so to rezone this to PDD R2 would be an extension of that existing R2 district. We don't see any impact for fire, police protection, or any need for additional utilities. Republic Avenue is a collector's street. It's not a, it's odd in its geometrics, but it does carry 4,000 vehicles a day between Santa Fe and Ninth Street, and by comparison, Highland carries approximately 600 vehicles per day. So Republic is the visitor of the streets. And we provided you with some comparisons of trip generation from elementary schools, assuming 100 students, single-family homes, assuming 12 new homes. Both of those slightly exceed the vehicle trip generation that would result from 15 One thing that we wanted to point out is that this property is currently based on its historic use as a school, shown as public, semi-public in the comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission should consider whether an amendment is needed and could be justified to show this as urban residential instead. And so if you view this as a school site or as a governmental use site, then the public, semi-public land use makes sense. If you view it as a potential residential redevelopment site, all of the surrounding property is zoned for residential use and shown as residential in the comprehensive plan. So on page 13 of your report, we have presented the Commission with two potential action items to act on at today's meeting. The first consideration is whether the future land use map in the comprehensive plan should be amended to change the designation of the former Lowell Elementary School from public, semi-public to urban residential like all of the surrounding neighborhood. And that would be according to what your vision is for the future of this site. If you think it should be reserved only for public land uses, then that would not support the change. And so your first consideration this afternoon would be to whether to reaffirm the existing comprehensive plan and show this as public, semi-public as currently shown on the map, or recommend that the land use map be amended to show this as future urban residential land use if you find that that amendment is justified to support the adaptive reuse of this building. The second action item, should you find that a map amendment to the comprehensive plan is justified, is to consider whether the zoning map should be amended to change the zoning of this property from R1 to PDD R2. And so we have identified a number of alternatives as it relates to zoning, and I'm going to walk you through those and explain what the ramifications of each of those are. So first, you could recommend approval of the requested zoning change in the proposed site development plan, subject to any conditions and limitations that you deem appropriate. Your second option would be to recommend approval of the zoning change in the proposed site development plan and off-street parking only, and recommend that the future development area retain its current R1 zoning. In other words, you could recommend that only this west half be rezoned at this time, and to keep the east portion that's not being developed at this time, keep it zoned R1. You could postpone consideration of this application and continue it to a future meeting date to allow applicant or staff to provide additional information about the proposal or to modify the proposal. You could recommend that this request to rezone this school site be denied. What we have done is provided for you on page 14 that if, after consideration of all the evidence presented at today's hearing, you wish to recommend approval of the application, we have outlined a number of potential conditions. And I would point out that condition number one allows no more than 15 dwelling units. And so if there was ever a request to come forward with more than 15 dwelling units, that would have to come back before the Commission. The item three is that the final development plan for Phase 1 should be submitted to and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issue of a permit, and that that plan has to comply with the plan presented here today. In order to do a Phase 2, that plan would have to be submitted to and approved by the Planning Commission prior to issuance of a building permit. So let's say that you took action to recommend that the entire site be rezoned to PDD R2. It would still require the developer to come back with a specific plan for the Phase 2 area for year review and approval before that could move forward. And so on page 15, we have provided possible findings that would support the applicant's request for the planned development district R2 zoning, and those are that the former Lowell School building is a historic resource, and redevelopment of the building is preferable to vacancy and deterioration or demolition. Redevelopment into housing would be an adaptive reuse of an existing historic building. This would provide additional housing units in an infill location. The current R1 zoning inhibits redevelopment of the existing building. Redevelopment with multifamily dwellings under a planned development district standard would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood or nearby properties. Public facilities and services are adequate, and the location of this site is consistent with the locational preferences for multifamily identified in the comprehensive plan. Obviously, the Commission is free to agree or disagree with those things put forward. I would just note that the primary concern of staff would be that now that we have a vacant, unused building, that we don't think that long-term vacancy vacant, unused building, that we don't think that long-term vacancy and continued deterioration of the building is in the best interests of the community or the neighborhood. It tends to be a magnet for code enforcement complaints if we have older historic buildings that are sitting idle. They tend to deteriorate, not improve, in their condition. So, if the, if this request is, this particular request is not approved, then the planning commission just needs to consider what a long-term acceptable use is of this property as currently zoned. So, with that, I will be open to any questions from members of the commission about the report or anything in the report. I did want to note again that we had two letters of correspondence that were received that didn't make it into your packet, and the first one was from Sue Dreher, and she was sending this in reference to application PDD 20-1. She says she would hate to see the old Lowell School and Playground rezoned to R2 multifamily. I have lived on Highland for over 47 years and enjoy the quietness and family camaraderie of the neighborhood. I believe putting in apartments and duplexes in a historic district would take away from that. Not only would it take away from property values, but the traffic would be terrible. There are a lot of kids that would be put in danger. Surely, there are other ways to utilize the property to enhance the area instead of rezoning it for multifamily use. The other letter was from Pam Barnes, who lives at 955 Highland, four doors down from the school, and she would like to know why. We are talking about putting apartments in that space. Whether there are 14 apartments or high-rise apartments, don't belong in the Highland neighborhood. They don't want to zone it R3 or any other zoning that would allow for apartments. Slides were shown where there were no apartments anywhere near this neighborhood. It would be better to put single-family cottages there that will fit into the neighborhood. At least there will be pride of ownership when families bought them. I don't understand how the real estate agents that spoke for the buyer at the meeting could have been raised on Highland with such treasured memories and would now want to take that away from the children that live there now. There wouldn't be enough money to gain to make me want to do that to a beautiful neighborhood. Our amazing country unfortunately has a long history of a few prospering financially while the rest have to live with the consequences. It started with the Native Americans and continued with destroying the great herd of Buffaloes. If a few great men like John Buwer, for example, had not fought to protect some of our national treasures, the few would have been destroyed, them for a profit. Millions have witnessed the majesty of the great redwoods in Yosemite National Park that would have been cut down for a few men's profit and created an uncalculable loss for generations that followed. I don't understand how one or two men that received this property practically for free for a specific reason would be able to sell it for a huge amount for something completely different. I have talked to several families that had their children enrolled at the Christian school, and all said that the man that ran the school did not allow anyone to go to any of the board meetings that would not disclose the finances to anyone. That sounds suspicious to me and many others. My suggestions would be to let the buyer of the property create some beautiful craftsman-style single-family homes, or the county buy it if for what the owner's outstanding bills are and create a park. Neighbors had a say 15 years ago, and the city was very cautious to try to continue to fit the buildings into the neighborhood in the use that made sense. I still feel strongly that the owner should not profit off of this property, which was given to him for the school. His mismanagement should not be rewarded. Long before the school went under, he should have handed it over to someone that would have run the school successfully. Thank you. Sincerely, Pam Barnes. So, those were two written correspondence that we received that were not in your packet, so I've entered those into the record, and I would stand for any questions that commissioners might have of staff. Please remember to identify yourself when you ask your question.
Commissioner Lenkowitz, I do have one question, and it might be in there, and I just missed it. Did we ever figure out, based on the acreage, how many single-family plots would fit there in the approximate density?
Well-
And the difference between the current plan with the apartments?
I'm trying to leaf through some, somewhere in your packet, and you can vaguely see it on the development plan. If you could put the development plan up, Allison, the, let's see, what's it, or the site survey, either one, why don't you go there? So, what this is, what this, this was platted for single-family lots similar to the surrounding area. So, what you've got is platted lots that face the street, I think by staff's count, there's, you could put six, if you leveled everything, you could put six homes facing Beloit and six homes facing Republic using the existing lot configuration. But what happened was that this property was platted for single-family home sites, and then the Salina Board of Education condemned the property in 1914 to make it a school site, and they just built the school on the existing lot configuration. But there are, there are six underlying lots facing Republic and six underlying lots facing Beloit.
Thank you. Sorry to make you go over that again.
It's, they're faint lines. I take, take that back as a recounting. There are seven, seven platted lots facing each, each direction. So, if you started with an empty slate and you put a house, individual house on each of the platted lots, you would end up with 14 single-family dwellings.
So, are we ready for a public comment at this point, or?
Yes, there's no further questions of staff. I guess the only, the normal course of vision would be to hear from the applicant, but I believe that we will be taking whatever order that the calls might come in, and we will take those in that order, and the applicant will get, or the applicant's representative will get in that queue, but at this point, it would be time to open up for any questions that might be phoned in.
Okay, we are ready to hear from caller with the last four digits of 1-0-1-3.
They need to hit star nine to-
There's a lag, so they have to wait and see if they're still there.
I understand.
Okay, well, we have another, another person, we have the applicant. We just raised our hand, we'd like to hear from them.
Absolutely.
I have no comment on this. I was commenting that you, trying to let you guys know that you watched video there for a while. That's why my hand was raised on the call.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Yes, we are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Mr. Chairman, the commissioners and staff, appreciate your time. I don't have a lot right now. We'd like to listen, and I'd certainly be happy to stand for any questions that the commissioners have of us immediately. We would like the right to come back and speak after further public comment if necessary. Time has gone by since we started this process, just, you know, like for all of us. We're now four months down the road. We, we do have a couple things that we would like to propose or have you consider, consider changing. Of course, you know, the PDD was our, was our exercise in trying to make things work and making us close to what, you know, what the community wanted, to still be able to redevelop the property into multifamily, which we feel like is the highest and best use, given its current condition. We would be interested in you discussing the possibility of just going to straight R2 with its bulk regulations. One thing that, one, one change if we do end up at PDD would be that, we had talked about a 20-foot, 25-foot height restriction. We see on the bulk regulations, and Mr. Andrew, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I see it as, under R2, 35-foot is the permitted height with 50-foot as conditional use. We're, we're now, like I said, we're four months down the road from when we started this. No immediate plans, but as we've been talking about other opportunities and options, we do think that the 25-foot might be low, so, you know, for future development, you know, you look in the area, and there's a number of two-story houses in the area around there, and we would certainly want to retain the opportunity to go to story. And in looking at some of that, we think that the 25-foot that we proposed may be a couple feet short, so we would, we would like you to entertain modifying our request to reflect the 35-foot. And direct to the R2.
Thank you.
It is 35-foot for R2 in the bulk?
Yes, even in a single-family R1 district, the maximum house height is 35 feet, which is essentially like a two-and-a-half-story home that you might have on South Santa Fe, but the, the 35-foot is for a standard permitted use, single-family or duplex. The 50-foot is if someone wanted to do multifamily apartments or another conditional use, they could go up to 50 feet. Schools are a conditional use, so that, that would be an option.
We were just looking at the name, but it's not- I thought the 25-foot would potentially limit it to what we went on to do, if we went on to do something.
Our, our records show the existing school building to be 24 feet tall.
That's all we have for right now. We would like the right to return if need be, or, and certainly answer any questions that, that the commissioners have of us directly now, or we'll come back for other questions as you require.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Mays?
This is Commissioner Gilmore. I just have a question as far as the PDD. Is there any provisions set up to include any kind of outdoor play area for children that may be residing in these properties?
Commissioner, thank you. One second, I'm checking. We don't have any plan right now to retain the equipment. At one point, we were talking about with the parking and everything else, we don't have any, any, any plans to retain any equipment. It's, it's, I mean, from a, the reality of the matter is, and we talked about this with the other planning commission, I don't like it any more than anyone else does, but being private property, managing that liability is, is not feasible. In the world we live in today, I mean, it just isn't feasible for having a private, a private investor manage a, a public area like that.
Right, and I'm not even referring to having a public area, but just for the children of the residents of the apartments itself.
Not right now.
Any other questions for the applicant? Well, thank you for your time, Mr. Mays. I believe that's it at this point.
We appreciate your time. Mr. Andrew, is this remute after you, when you move on, or how does that work? I was, I was on the city commission last night, and we, I was confused on how we go back off. I don't have to do anything on my end.
If he wants to talk again, he can just hit star nine, and we'll go back to him.
If you wish to speak again, you can just hit star nine, and we'll get you back on the queue.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, we are ready for caller with the last four numbers, 5433.
Oh, hi, commissioners and staff. This is Joan Ratsliff, and I live a half-block north of the property. I, first, I want to tell you that your first several minutes of audio on speakerphone was lost. I mean, it wasn't, you couldn't hear, and it came on about four minutes after. So, I was able to watch and hear quite well on, on Salina Media Connection, and currently the audio on Salina Media Connection is, is still good, but I really have a hard time hearing the speakerphone, especially when Dean was answering the question. There's some feedback or something, but I couldn't understand his answer. I could hardly understand that I was being unmuted, you know, that my phone number was the one being unmuted. So, it was, it was the system that eluded me. This is less than perfect, I got to say. I look forward to the time when we can do this in person. But I did have some, some comments about this in addition to what I see now. I see that Jeff Mays is speaking as a representative, even though the, the PDD application doesn't have his name on it. And I have a concern about, on page one of the staff report, it says the area to rezon is the two acres, but the building is the only one, the only part of it that has a plan submitted. We're talking about rezoning the whole area without a plan for a PDD, and I see that as a problem. On page three, it talks about a proposed community partnership. I never heard of that. So, and R2 would allow 29 units on the two acres, I think, but again, there's no plan for that. Others, others have mentioned, um, single-family residences and the, under R1 zoning, that would be allowed. We were talking earlier about how many, um, single-family residences would be allowed on the entire property if the building was leveled, and I think that was 14. It looks like six could be allowed if the building stayed there, but that, doesn't seem like that possibility has been discussed. I see that the plan still includes a driveway into the intersection on Republic. I don't understand that. It doesn't make any sense. It's a bad location. But I want to go back to single-family residences. Adding driveways along Republic on the north side of the lot would create a problem on the busy and narrow street. I think that, say on pages eight and nine of the staff report, there's no mention of USD meetings with the neighborhood residents. We've suggested the desire for school with public access to playgrounds or a public park, and I want to say that, according to the park's master plan, you know, it, staff did not mention this, but I want to say that neighborhood school playgrounds serve as neighborhood parks. So, while it may not have been a park, it served as a park. Also, on page nine, the ownership of part of the site by the city of Salina has barely been glanced at. We shouldn't dismiss that opportunity by rezoning the whole two acres. The correspondence in the packet was a brief email following a meeting between a couple of us neighbors and park superintendent. It does not demonstrate that this idea has been explored, given the creed we- It does not demonstrate that this idea has been explored, given the credence that it, that it deserves. Also, on page 10, the block of Santa Fe bordering Lowell is owned R2. All the dwellings are under single-family. So, rather than pointing to existing zoning as support for rezoning of the whole site, I think that we should consider that the actual use is more restrictive than the R2 zoning. The actual use is more like in, is more consistent with R1. And in the second paragraph on page 10, the neighborhood believes that rezoning and development would be inconsistent with current uses and that it would harm the neighborhood. It wouldn't do anything to improve it. And again, we're talking about the whole two acres. So, on page 11, we're talking about single, or multifamily residences. We're talking about 15 units when a rezoning of the whole two acres would allow 29 or 30. So, I, I just don't think the plan meets the requirements that we need. I would like to see findings from the plan or in support of denial, but I think that you can come up with those. That was on page 15. On page 45, a map of rental properties, that's the applicant's representative's work from February, and it's, it's not exact. It's simply, as he stated, it's noting what mailing addresses and site addresses don't match. Some of those weren't actually up to date. At least a couple of those properties were vacant and abandoned, as I commented in my written comments. We think that, oh, and, and the attachment 12, it's not an actual petition, but it was a short letter with 180-some names, 180 or 180, 190 names. And of course, there would be far more if we hadn't been prevented from canvassing because of COVID precautions. When it comes to a protest petition, if, if it comes to a protest petition, we would want some accommodation for how that petition is handled. So, I'm hoping that, if it does come to that, that the U. The Commissioners will help with that by accommodating that. The neighborhood is trying to be reasonable. We're open to compromise, but due to the nature of the application, the insistence of the seller and developer and his partners, we see no option other than to propose rezoning the entire site. We arranged to meet with Mr. Richardson, this is to discuss his plans. We offered to discuss alternatives. We suggested creating a driveway off the Lloyd instead of Republic. He didn't like that idea, but gave no reason. He persisted in proposing an apartment building, parking lot entrance, not only onto Republic, but proximal to the problem intersection. It's just astonishing. We suggested renegotiating the contract for the school only to allow more suitable development of the open space, especially since he told us he had no plans for the open space, and his interest was in the building. So, the neighborhood is wanting to work up something to have a better plan for this whole If we talk about all of the things that are in the way, I think that we should be talking about how, or what solutions we can find. For instance, if we have issues with funding, which we obviously do, we look for grants. If the developer and his partners are unwilling to renegotiate a contract and just remodel the school building into apartments, there are good public and multi-uses that could be considered, like a branch library, daycare, office space, work share, gym in the public, in the multipurpose room, meeting rooms, classrooms. And lastly, I want to stress that the planning process exists to serve the public interest, and others in, in their, their public comments have spoke to this. We need to think if the rezoning of two acres to R2 serves the public or only a developer and his partners. And when Mr. Mays comes and proposes moving away with the PDD and just asking for straight rezoning and increasing the height another 10 feet, that shows me where they're coming from, and they do not care about the neighborhood. They're, they just care about making money. So, I'd no choice but to ask you to recommend option four, deny rezoning the entire two-acre site, because we need to start over. So, I thank you for allowing me the time. And if you have any questions for me, then perhaps you could, you could ask later, and I could star nine back in.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments and your time.
Thank you.
Our next available caller, as their hand raise is 8138.
8138.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I would also like to note, as far as some issues with getting on this call, when we go to the link for YouTube, youtube.com/cityofsalinacansas.
Could you please?
It's not showing the live stream at all. It just shows live stream from yesterday, videos. So, I would like, I would like to mention that a link that was provided from, for the salinatv.org, it takes a number of clicks to get there, so I believe that that's probably difficult for a number of people to get on. So, my name's Dan Peterson, and I live at 948 Highland, just over 200 feet from the school. My family and I moved to Salina about four years ago, came out of state, as we knew that this would be a great place to raise a family. Being familiar with Salina, Highland is where we wanted to buy a house, because this area just has a really unique charm, and it's just different than any other neighborhood I've seen in Salina, and just has a really community-oriented feel. I was at the last meeting and expressed some concerns and my opposition to the rezoning of the property. Nothing new, nothing in the new application has changed my mind. In fact, it doesn't feel like any concerns that were brought up by me or others were addressed. In the packet, you'll find 14 pages of signatures opposed to rezoning the property to allow apartments. Most of those signatures are within three blocks of the school. To give you an idea of proximity, some addresses directly north that sign include 967 Highland, 963, 955, 954, 950, 948, 946, 945, 942, 937, 933, 930, 926, 925, 921. I could keep going, but I think the point is made at just how close of proximity these houses are to the school and these people that are opposed to the rezone for apartments. And as Joan mentioned, we, the signatures were gotten during spring break and also when all the COVID happened, so there would have been a lot more, because as, as we saw, there was just an overwhelming amount of people against the rezone. And as this is, meaning this virtual, I think it's going to be hard for many people to get on this and, and actually present their thoughts. So, if that's the case, I'd like to share concerns that, we heard when we were getting signatures, and concerns that are mine, and I just think these are important to hear. There are concerns that apartments on the property are not consistent with the surrounding use. If you look at a map, it is surrounded by nearly 100-year-old, single-family homes in all directions with no apartments or high-density housing. There is nothing nearby that is close to 14 units per acre. It does not fit or match. I don't know if you can bring up the, the current zoning image that's there? I'd like to note that with the rezone, R2 is really encroaching in a neighborhood that is R1. If you look to the north and south and west, all the way, it's completely R1. So, really, it feels like this is a domino effect. If this is rezoned, then we can, again, in the future, say, oh, there's R2 there, and now we can push it more, and now we can push it more, and now we can push it more. I just don't think it matches the surrounding area. I don't think this is good or healthy for the neighborhood long-term. A number of people, and I included, brought up concerns about house resale and value. Right now, this is a very desirable area to buy a house, and apartment building will make it much less desirable and hurt resale value. And I can show you that. I mean, they said, oh, no, it won't, but multiple neighbors who have bought houses recently have said that they would not have bought a house on this street if there were apartments there. And I believe that's true, because I, we bought, the current house ran two years ago, and we wouldn't have done that either. And some have said the failure will move out if apartments go in there. And I really don't believe that is the goal of the planning commission, and it should just be a major red flag. While these types of developments may have brought up other areas, it assume that this area needs something like apartments to be brought up. That's not true. Not all neighborhoods are the same, and to compare it to, you know, this place that was redone, or this place that was redone, that's just looking at one thing, that's not looking at the surrounding area or the neighborhood. There are also major traffic concerns, and I don't know if you can bring up at this point where the proposed parking lot will go? So, the proposed parking lot has been, has been mentioned by multiple people. It's set to spill out at the confusing intersection of Highland and Republic. This is, if you've been there, a very poorly laid-out, offset intersection, but no one knows how to get through. You can regularly hear honking, and if you go out to turn, people go out of turn, they don't stop, and they just don't know what to do. And also, traffic flies down from this, flies down Highland from this intersection. I have kids, I'm always worried about their safety coming out or crossing the street right there, because people don't pay attention and don't know what to do. The fact that they're trying to put the parking lot right there just doesn't make sense. It's not an intersection you want more traffic put at. I mentioned this at the last meeting, and you heard a verbal agreement from all the neighbors that were around or at the meeting. And unfortunately, this was not heard and foreaddressed in the plan. It really feels like the neighborhood's safety is being overlooked, and it really makes the neighborhood feel like the developer wants to do this no matter what. They don't care what people think. They don't care about people's safety. It really just feels like that's all being overlooked. One thing I'll note is Republic Avenue through Salina is about two-and-a-half miles long. The proposed parking lot entrance is at the very narrowest, if you go through all of Republic, it's at the very narrowest portion of Republic. When cars are parked on the north side, it's impossible for two cars to pass, you have to wait for one to go by. I think putting an intersection there just doesn't make sense. I've seen fire trucks coming from the station at Santa Fe with their lights and sirens flashing, and they're, they have to ride the tail through cars of that section of Republic, because there's no way for anyone to get over. Multiple cars can't get by. And this is just not a one-time occurrence. I've seen it many, many times. So, I don't know why this is even being considered at this point. And then, there are concerns in the neighborhood, just if, with 30 parking spaces, if multiple people have visitors, that parking can spill out into the neighborhood, which is just not desired. And given the age of the neighborhood, Highland has a number of spare driveways, single-lane driveways, and one-car garages, so homeowners rely on the street parking, and I just don't think that that's given enough, that's been given enough thought. Additional concerns are a lack of ownership. A group of neighbors met with the buyer to see the plans for the property, and nothing put the neighborhood at ease. We asked, could they be properties that are bought? And he said, no, they're just going to be rental properties. And that's not, we just don't see that as in the same pride of ownership. That comes with, comes with owning houses on the street, and it just doesn't build community. And while there are rental houses in there, they tend to be families who stay for several years or end up buying the home they have been renting. I'd like to make note of the map that was shown, that just shows rental properties in the area, and I just, I just think that maps a little bit of a joke and assumes too much, and shouldn't be used as proof that there's that many rentals. It, it assumes that homeowners won't have the property taxes that's sent to the box. And even if there are rental properties, it just seems that the neighborhood is okay with more, which is not true. We'd love it to be all family-owned. And then, many worry that adding multiple families to a small area will increase noise. One neighbor said her parents lived near another school that was converted to apartments in Salina. They said it made just a previously, previously quiet neighborhood much quieter and more active, but not in a good way. And as has been mentioned, a major concern is future development area. Don't want apartments in the current building, and want, don't want them to have the ability to add more to the property. I would say that it's very deceiving on the development proposal that it says seven-and-a-half units per acre are proposed, because that's, that, they're doing, they're just building in one, one place, so they're saying seven-and-a-half acre, units per acres are proposed, but that doesn't include future development. All of these apartments are going on one acre that they have right now, with plans for future development. And I'll say that the future development stuff that many neighbors didn't realize. Last time's meeting, we said, it was that the neighbors really want to see a plan that will put them at ease, and nothing has been given to us that, that does that. This is, this is not a plan. And Mr. Mays is trying to get more added on now, this far down the road, saying, hey, we need to, we need to do it, R2 is not the problem. So, I don't see how this can be a plan, and it doesn't fit the neighborhood at ease. And in the last meeting, an agent said there wasn't much they could do with the plan. Multiple people separately said that they never saw the property listed on the website. Also, the, her cell sign was put up only in December, and we were given notice in early Jan, or January about proposed rezoning. When we were asking signatures, multiple sources said that there was major interest towards the local school to buy the building. The fact that this didn't work, we worked out a very clear point, and it, it could have avoided all those. It feels like the, they're not looking out for the neighborhood when they're doing this. It just doesn't feel like due diligence has been done. It feels like this was their plan all along, no matter how it affects the neighborhood. It feels like they're just trying to shove this down their throats to say, this is what we're going to do, barring. And when Lowell was closed, feedback from the neighborhood on their wish for the property, the consensus was they wanted some sort of public access. That is still true today. This has been a place that the public has been able to access for over 100 years. A part of our community has been lost since the playground was closed. We don't have parks within a half-mile of most houses on Highland, as the park's master plan recommends. I have kids, this would be, having a park there would be great, or a playground even. And on the city land use map, it's marked public and semi-public use, which is what we want, and we wanted to stay the same. So, as you've heard, there are just tons of concerns in the neighborhood and no answers. I'd ask that you each consider what your reaction would be if apartments were placed in the school next to your house. I honestly don't think most people would be excited. And really, I think our, our neighborhood has made it abundantly clear they do not want apartments. We don't want our neighborhood ruined by a four-prop venture, and we ask that you don't force something that can be forced. The taxpayers in this neighborhood want to be inherited. At the end of the day, we live here and want what's best for the neighborhood. If you're looking for a fit, this really isn't it. Again, I thank you for your time, and I ask that you pay attention to the pages and pages of people who said they do not want apartments, to our neighbors within a few blocks, and just deny the rezones for apartments. Thank you.
Well, we thank you very much for your time and for your comments and your concern for the neighborhood.
We don't have anybody else, so if anybody else wants to raise their head and star nine.
So, if anybody else has some comments, they can call in and hit star nine. So, if anybody else has some comments, they can call in and hit star nine.
Okay. We have a call from 7005.
That's me.
Yes, we can hear you. Could you please identify yourself and, yes, we can hear you, just, please identify yourself and your address and continue with your comments.
My name, my name is Pam Barnes. I live at 955 Highland Avenue. Um, four years ago, before I decided if I wanted to live here or not, I flew out here and rented a car, and I drove through neighborhoods just looking at Salina and where I might want to live if I came here. And every time I crossed Highland or went down Highland, I just felt that it was a unique neighborhood, and it was very family-oriented, and I knew that when I moved here, it didn't matter what, I was going to wait for a house to come up for sale, and I was going to live on Highland. Um, I feel like Highland is a unique neighborhood in that the whole community uses Highland. For instance, for, um, in October, when we have, um, um, sorry, Halloween, hundreds and hundreds of families come down this block. I feel like many people use this, this block to walk their animals, to, um, to stroll. It's, I feel like if apartments are there, it could change the whole atmosphere, that, um, it could be even become to the point where if people moved out, less, less desirable people, maybe drug people or something, could move in. Uh, it'd become more dan, possibly more dangerous. To live here, um, I just think that it would be a loss for the whole community of Salina if we changed this block to become apartment buildings and, and, sorry, there's a lot of key jacks on this phone, so it's hard to think with my voice coming back up. Um, so, anyway, I just, I really hope that you'll listen to the people that live here and, and say no to this proposal. I don't think it would be healthy for our neighborhood. And the people who live here have chosen to live here, they could have lived anywhere in the United States, and they chose to live on Highland Avenue because of the, the unique little quaint houses and the wonderful neighbors that walk by and say hello and stop to talk all the time. So, please, please consider everyone that lives here, because we've got to keep staying here even after you make a decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your time and your comments, and, you know, obviously, the fact that you're very concerned about the neighborhood, and we'll take that under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is 4482.
4482, you can hit star nine.
Hello, this is.
Yes, we can hear you, we just need you to identify yourself and your address, please.
Yes, this is Greg Johnson, at 1016 Highland. I've lived at this location for 30 years, and I walked the neighborhood with Larry down the street and talked with every single person in the neighborhood surrounding the property, and every single one of them did not want the zoning to be changed for apartments to be built there. Uh, we are concerned about safety, we're concerned about the, um, traffic coming on Republic, we think that the, it would be dangerous, and we also think that, um, the park should be somehow still available to the children of the neighborhood. I had five children who grew up here and enjoyed playing in that park, I have grandchildren who used to play there, but now it's locked up. And the developer does not want to listen to any concerns or was not interested in any of our opinions, and I think that that does not bode well for the future. And I do ask the commission to reject the application.
Okay, we appreciate your comments and your time, and thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, this might be a great time to remind callers to maybe turn off the devices that they're listening and probably not to use speakerphones, just so we want to hear their comments nice and clear.
I think that's a very good point.
Our next caller is 1858.
Okay, 1858, please hit star nine, and please turn down your device if you're in close proximity to it, so there's not feedback.
Let's do a sound check, is there feedback?
Are we, I think, it sounds good.
Okay, this is Jacqueline Cairo. Um, I live in the 700 block of Highland, and me, myself and my, my parents and my siblings have lived in this neighborhood for over 45 years. Uh, I'm nervous, so bear with me. Uh, perhaps you could give me a raise of hands, how many of the commissioners there or any other party have trick-or-treated on Highland?
Well, I can tell you, I'm Commissioner Lenkowitz, uh, my, both my children, which are past the trick-or-treating age, but they have been down Highland. I've, I've had friends that lived on that street, and we've, we've gone there and partaked in that celebration.
What's that speaking to impart is the character of the neighborhood. Uh, your commissioners may know also that, uh, I believe 200, uh, two of the blocks in, uh, between 700 and 900, specifically 700 and 800, or at least parts of them have, have also had historical designation. And, uh, that movement came, oh, I don't remember the year, but came, uh, at the time when there was a rezoning on, I believe it was the 600 block of South Santa Fe, wherein the, there was a medical clinic inserted in the middle of the neighborhood. So, as a consequence of that, there was a movement efforts to keep, uh, parts of Santa Fe and Highland from, uh, succumbing, I guess, to that same demise, so, and to preserve the neighborhood, and that, that's, that's really what's at issue here with this rezoning request, at least from the neighborhood, is, is the preservation of, uh, the neighborhood. Um, uh, I'd also ask, you know, being naive to this whole process, um, do, do planning commissions do anything besides approve or slot down zoning changes? Uh, is there, is there an avenue for the commission itself to, uh, propose when confronted with a, a situation like we have here, to, uh, to bring your own thoughts to the, um, possibilities for this property, other than, uh, private business coming in and, and trying to do something with it? Um, also, for the, for the sake of other listeners, that I don't, um, I'm not business-savvy by any means, but in, in the, for myself a little bit about this process, um, it, it came to my attention, and these numbers could be wrong, but, um, that the USD 305 School District sold the property to the Salina Christian Academy in early 2000s for approximately $2,000. Um, uh, on Sling County, um, yeah, Sling County's own appraisal, uh, database, it showed that the property itself was appraised at about $435,000 in 2006, and, and is now currently appraised at $1.1 million. Uh, I don't understand, being na, again, not business-savvy, how, um, it seems like the current owners, um, I don't know how to express it, but have the, uh, all the profit that come from the taxpayers, having paid for that property as taxpayers. So, uh, there's that. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Andrews mentioned that one of the considerations that the commission needed to have is, is, is a potential enforcement of code ordinances should the property go, um, you know, deteriorate. And there, there, you said with the, well, hello, uh, doesn't the current owner have, do they want, what are they planning to abandon it? Just, uh, that, that doesn't make sense anyway. Anyway, I'm asking, I'm asking the commission to, to use their own creative, uh, experience to perhaps come up with something, um, better than this being proposed. And it's, it's a no-brainer, nobody in the neighborhood wants apartment buildings there. Uh, uh, it's, nobody does. You wouldn't either if you lived here. So, uh, I give you that, and, um, I thank you for your time.
We appreciate your time and your comments. Thank you.
If anyone would like to call in and hit star nine, we don't have anybody in the queue right now.
Okay, so if somebody would like to call in and hit star nine, there's an opening. And again, reminder, please turn down your devices and take your device off speakerphone before you call in.
Perhaps while we're waiting, Mr. Chair, I wanted to jot down some notes on Joan Ratzleff's call and comment that I would just want to clarify.
Certainly.
A few things. Um, first of all, um, the planning commission is completely within its discretion to recommend denial of this request. The first action item is whether this should be urban residential instead of, um, public, semi-public land use, so obviously, if, if the majority of commissioners don't think it should be, um, used for urban residential purposes, they should recommend that the plan not be amended, and that would make this application inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The other thing we tried to point out is that the, uh, the goal with the different options and with the potential conditions was to try to come up with a plan that had the, the least impact on the existing conditions, and we have, I don't know that it was clear to some of the callers that the, uh, there's two things, that you are not being asked to approve development plans for the entire site, you're only being asked to approve development plan, a redevelopment plan for the existing building. Under option one, the, if there was a plan for a Phase Two, that plan would have to come back before the commission and neighbors would be notified and have an opportunity to review and comment on that. And option number two, only this portion here would have the zoning changed, and this would retain its current R1 zoning, and if there was any plan for future redevelopment of it, there would have to be a specific plan put forward. Those are just alternatives, but those were alternatives that were designed to limit redevelopment to the existing building. The other thing I wanted to point out is that if this is a site development plan, if there are concerns among planning commissioners, that the proposed access point on the narrowest part of Republic, east of an already problematic offset intersection, is a potential hazard. It is certainly within the planning commission's discretion to come up with a better solution, which might be moving the parking lot to the east side and connecting it to Lowell, or, or connecting it to Beloit. I think part of the idea with this plan is if you look at just the traffic counts and the amount of traffic on Republic, Republic is a more heavily-traveled street, so the, the driveway and the parking area would have less of an impact on a, a street that carries 4,000 cars a day, but it is completely within the planning commission's discretion to say that that plan is not desirable and that the parking area should be relocated and oriented to Beloit. And so, um, if there is a desire among the commission that you find that this is, um, contrary to the prevailing character of the neighborhood, and that the R2 zoning is overly dense compared to the surroundings, then, um, you can take some of those possible findings on page 15 and simply reverse those, and staff will be happy to work with you to come up with appropriate findings. But the, the efforts on the alternatives and with the developing potential conditions of approval was to try to do, um, the best to minimize the impact beyond what the existing conditions are. And then, in, I think the question that came in originally from Mr. Mays is whether the planning commission could recommend, at this point, straight R2 zoning instead of PDD R2 zoning. The answer to that is no, that you can always approve something that's more restrictive, but straight R2 zoning would be less restrictive, and if that was, um, the request, the application would have to be amended, and then it would have to come back before the commission in that amended form. So, I'll, I'll see if there are other callers, but I just wanted to address some of those items of comments and questions that came in.
Okay, no more callers. Commissioner Lenkowitz, Mr. Andrews, I do have one question, just for my, just a point of reference. On multifamily dwellings per code, is it required to provide playground equipment, play areas for, for the residents?
Well, um, the answer to that question is by local city code, no.
Okay.
The, uh, what has occurred, if you drive around the community and you see reserves at Prairie Glen, or you see the Heritage at Hawthorne, there is a, those were funded with low-income housing tax credits, and as part of the tax credit requirements, they are, those apartment complexes were required to provide recreation or play area for their residents as a condition of their financing, but that is not a local zoning requirement that an apartment complex provides so much outdoor area. Um, those, those facilities both have outdoor play areas for their residents, but it's because the way they were financed.
I understand, so that this project in particular does not fit into that category?
It's our understanding, at least at this point, that there's no, um, request for low-income housing tax credits for this project, but that would come into play if there was a request for that, but it is not a local requirement.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Olson, so if they decided to go low income, then the requirement may be that they would have to put in playground equipment. If it stays in R2 where they're going right now, they could still decide to put in playground equipment at a later date, difference being between where it's, or where it used to set. When it was Lowell School, it was actually public property, so it was open to people of the neighborhood, Highland, Republic, Beloit, multiple store, or streets. When it was bought by the Salina Christian Academy, it actually became public or private property. They could have limited access to it at that point in time, too. If they chose to leave it open, that was their choice at that point, correct?
Yes, and so, um, it's my understanding, and I can't, Mr. Mays could, could verify that better, but it's my understanding that initially, Salina Christian Academy left the playground open to the public, but then after some vandalism and damage to the property, they, they padlocked it. So, um, it is, the, even the school district is not obliged to let the public use the school grounds, but as a general rule, USD 305 has allowed neighborhood. as a general rule, USD 305 has allowed neighborhood residents to utilize school property in the off-hours.
Commissioner Olson again, but it's not all properties, because I know Coronado School, where they went in and did the adaptive care's playground equipment, that's now locked all the time. None of the neighborhood kids could get into that area. But there for a while, it was posted that it was open until nine o'clock, but even with public right now, it's not always open and accessed, because you can't get into the Coronado school ground at this point in time.
Also, the tennis courts at Central High School are not open to the public.
Yeah, Commissioner Olson again, that's because it was built by the Booster Club. It actually wasn't paid for by school funds. It's on their property, but it was actually paid for by the Booster Club. But right now, not all public schools are open to everybody for neighborhood use at this point in time.
The applicant is called back in if you're interested in hearing for them.
Yes, please.
I will clarify for you that yes, the Christian Academy did have their playground equipment open, but then ended up locking it, and I can't tell you the number of years. And this is according to their representative, Mr. Reynolds, and his communication to me. So it has been locked for a while. I can't tell you how long, but it was due to various issues, but it's been closed to the public for a while. Another point that I'd like to just to clarify, and Mr. Andrew pointed out, we were just asking about the R2, if that's not possible, and we're fine with going back to the PDD. If it's not possible under this application, we understand. Like I said, this is now four months down the road, so we're... We just were asking the question. Other uses, when I first walked through there, I made comment with the folks from Christian Academy, like, you know, highest of best use is the school. We talked to the other Christian school in town, or they did before coming to me for an extended period of time, as it was described, I want to say a couple of months, and they were unable to get together on making that happen. So that was all vetted before it ever went on the market, before they ever came to us for help in marketing the property. So if that helps in clarification at all. The property is... There are no low-income tax credits being applied for. There are historic tax credits being applied for. I think that's germane to some of the points that were made relative to preservation. All we can do is go in and new windows and some tuck pointing and fix the deterioration if there... You know, any deferred maintenance has gone on, but this is going to only enhance that property that sits there today and is required by virtue of the historic tax credits. But there are no low-income tax credits being applied for. That's not part of the business plan at all. So I hope that maybe helps you or helps all those in the neighborhood as well. I would offer that I think that if you look at the parking densities and the various uses, providing 30 off-street parking spaces, which the plan does, only makes that whole environment there better without having as much off-street that occurred if it was Lowell School and then the Christian Academy. I would petition to you that the plan is only going to make that whole environment there with this use better. Single-family residences backing up against Republic, they're going to have to have driveways. So I would just off of that as a point. I will reject the idea, having been a young adult, a young professional, and having lived in apartments, there's this carton much idea that if we put apartments in, their crime's going to go through the roof. I would reject the idea that if you live in apartments, you're somehow criminal. And I get the concern, but I sometimes wonder how much of that is this is an argument as much... I mean, lots of young professionals, nurses and business people and restaurateurs at the time, rented apartments because I couldn't afford anything else, but it doesn't mean that you're somehow going to ruin the neighborhood. I offer that across the board. I'll close with this. Again, it's historic... It's a historic tax credit application. The property is going to be in far better condition than it is today. I will point to you again to St. John's Hospital and the fight that occurred, how many years ago, Mr. Andrew, I don't know, was it 10? Maybe in excess of 10? And you can see what that building set there and done. This keeps the property viable. It is in an infill location in our community, which is what we've been directed as helpers that the community wants. It puts the property back on the tax rolls. And I think... And we are in full support of staff's recommendation and their findings, one through six, that we feel like this is a viable application. I'd ask you to vote yes.
Any other questions?
Anybody have any questions?
So Commissioner Olson, so you said you do not want to go to the straight R2 since it would be amended and you would have to go through the process again. What about the... Yeah.
You know, both of the Christian Academy has been closed for an extensive period of time for them. We've got a developer that's ready to go to put the property back into production. We don't have time to go through it again, so... I'm always a fan of straight zoning, but I get the necessity of it in this case. We would ask that we could go back to the bulk zoning of 35 feet, and that's really just looking at the surrounding neighborhood and saying 25 feet's too short as opposed to some of the other houses that are there.
Okay. And Commissioner Olson again, and that was my question, if you still wanted to get rid of the 25-foot and go to the 35-foot height, which is standard within the R2 zoning, even within the PPD?
If we can't... If we can't... If... Excuse me. If entertaining R2 is not a possibility, then the PPD, well, we'd ask that you act on it.
Commissioner Bernhardt, I just had a question on the parking off of Republic. There seems to be a huge safety concern there. Can you clarify a little bit more about how you feel that will... Won't be a safety concern, or is there another alternative to make a possible second entry point to that parking lot off of maybe Beloit?
That is really a question for more for Mr. Richardson and where that's located. I know that when he met with architects and his engineer and all that, and they laid it out, they thought that was an appropriate place for it. That's why it's reflected on the plan. If the planning commission staff feels differently, I think staff was in... I don't know if staff was in support or not, as it was my take, but if staff is in support, we'd ask you to act accordingly. But I can't tell you pros and cons, because I wasn't involved with the conversation with the engineer.
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant? Mr. Mays, I believe that's it. I don't think we have any more questions.
Thank you again for all your time.
Thank you.
We do have another public comments request by 5433.
5433, dial star nine, and please turn down your device before you get on the phone and take it off speakerphone, please.
Okay. This is John Rassler, and I wanted to respond to a question by one of the commissioners, and I could not tell. Again, I don't know why maybe you need to speak directly into your mics, but some of the commissioners, I cannot hear your question on the speakerphone. So... But the comment had to do with questions about when the playground was closed and why. And to the best of my recollection, it has been closed for approximately two years, so one year before the school closed. And the reason given was maybe some vandalism or something. As far as I know, there has never, ever been any vandalism at that school. What I heard was there was one incident of some damage to a basketball hoop, probably not intentional. So... And it's been closed for a year. There's been no vandalism anywhere on the property that I can tell. And with the neighbors keeping an eye on it, I don't think that it would be gotten away with. I think that we do have time to look at other uses for the entire property, not just speaking about the building. And I don't think that we need to make our decisions out of fear or out of what's the worst that could happen. I think we need to keep that in mind, but look at what would be the best use rather than what money wants without considering the effect on the neighborhood. So again, to answer that question, there hasn't been any vandalism.
Okay. Well, thank you again for your comments and your time. Okay.
So Commissioner Olson, I guess I'll start the discussion process then. I think that it's a good use of the existing property. I mean, the example Mr. Mays gave of St. John's Hospital, which is still sitting there, which is still vacant, and they're still trying to find use for that with the existing building. It's not going to be a Hawthorne situation where they tear the whole thing down and then just put the front part of it back up. The majority of the building is going to stay there. Deterioration is going to be eliminated, so that's actually going to be put back into use, so that the property should be nice and so that it helps the neighborhood part of it. I don't see an issue with not moving forward. If I looked at our action items, I would tell you that I would look that probably we need to change it from the... What is it? The private semi-private or public semi-public to an R1 situation so that it can be or to a residential or future urban... What is the...
Urban residential.
And then move it to an urban residential.
This is the school site today, which is a public semi-public urban residential area. This is the fire station. So those are the two public uses currently in the vicinity, and that is a product of at the time the comprehensive plan was adopted, this was still used for educational purposes, and that's why it's shown as public semi-public.
So do we need to, as we're moving forward, as we discuss this, do we need to make motions on each of these independently? What's...
Yeah, there would need to be separate action items. The first thing would be whether there is any support for amending this map so that this is shown as future urban residential instead of as a public semi-public land use. That would be action item or question number one for the commission to consider. And then if that moved... Advanced forward, then you should consider how the property should be zoned or rezoned, but it would not make sense or be supported by the comprehensive plan if you thought it should be used for residential purposes, but it continued to be shown as public semi-public.
Then Commissioner Olson, I would make a motion to change the future land map used to show it's urban residential.
Commissioner Bernhardt, I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So what's our count on that?
Is that six in favor and one against?
I think there were two.
Two against? Five in favor, two against?
Okay.
Might I suggest, Mr. Chair, because of the meeting format style, it might be best to do a roll call vote, just so those at home listening are clear who voted and how.
Okay. So should we redo the vote then?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Margie, if you want to...
You're going to have to walk me through that process. Obviously, this isn't usual.
I think it's important, though, in this case, just for the members of public at home to realize how the vote went. So if you could just go through roll call and identify your votes. Okay. Commissioner Baffa?
No.
Sorry, I don't know everyone's names. Commissioner Bernhardt?
Bernhardt?
Yes.
Chair?
Commissioner Lenkowitz, that's a yes.
Commissioner Olson, that's a yes. Commissioner Gilmore is a no.
Commissioner Lang, yes.
Commissioner Good, yes. All right.
A couple of comments I would... Commissioner Lenkowitz, a couple of comments I would like to... And I mentioned it last time, there was a meeting on this, but it might bear repeating. And I'm probably repeating some things, but just kind of a reminder, this is privately-owned property. It is, you know, somebody invested money, they're paying property taxes, they're paying insurance, they have overhead expenses, and I know sometimes it can become abstract when it's not your money. And, you know, the idea of losing green space or playground space is not an attractive notion. But at the end of the day, the school district made a decision a long time ago to sell this property, and if anything, when the Salina Christian Academy acquired it, the neighborhood got a little bit of a reprieve from some very tough decisions that were going to have to be made. And here we are, you know, a decade or two later, faced with that particular decision. But at the end of the day, this is not a publicly-owned property, and I think the notion of a park or publicly-owned green space, as nice as it sounds, is not a financial... Financially realistic endeavor. And just from an observation as a citizen here in Salina, I think we're already having enough trouble with the particular... This potential maintenance issues that are coming with COVID and staffing issues. So that's just something I figured was worth verbalizing.
Mr. Chair, just so people at home are clear, we have a five-two vote, so motion passes, and that's a motion for the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to be amended from public semi-public to urban residential.
Thank you very much.
Second question that the planning commission needs to consider is directly relates to the application that has been filed, and that application is to consider whether the zoning map for the city of Salina should be amended to change the zoning classification of this property from R1 to PDD R2. And again, we have provided options, one, which would change the zoning designation for the entire site, but approve the development plan for the Phase One area only. And option number two is to change the zoning classification of only the Phase One area and to have the future development area retain its current R1 zoning. So option one would take this entire described area and subject it to a planned development district R2 with a deferred plan for this area. The option two would change the zoning designation of this property only and have that retain its R1 designation to be... Its use to be considered at a later date. Of course, the third option would be if there are things that you heard at the hearing or questions raised at the hearing today that you don't think have been adequately addressed by staff or the applicant, or then you certainly have the option to continue the public hearing on this to allow those items to be addressed. And notwithstanding your action item number one, you still have the option to recommend denial of the actual zoning change if you think it's out of place with the neighborhood.
Commissioner Olson, so since we made the change to the comprehensive map, if you go back and look at the map showing existing properties in that area, everything is R1 or R2, so the majority of that, even to the east of it, falls within an R2 zoning. I don't see where that would be an issue. I would make a motion to change the lot from R1 to the PPD R2 since the applicant said that they didn't want to go through the process to change it to a straight R2. And that way, we'd cover the entire property, so they wouldn't have to go through the process again.
You know, Dan Baffa, I, you know, I might tend to agree with you, but I also agree with the petitioners. And, you know, they're defining the character of the neighborhood, and it's our job to maintain that character. And if... And if the petitioners are, looks like they would probably protest our decision anyway to zone it to R2. So I would say, you know, we might as well go along with that, those petitioners, and deny their request.
For the future land use area? This is Commissioner Olson.
Yeah.
I just guess, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what part you're talking about.
I'm talking about the application.
As a whole? As a whole, to change it to an R, PPD R2?
No, not to.
It might be helpful to talk in options. So I believe, Commissioner Olson, you're talking as option one.
Yes, I'm talking option one.
In the staff report, Commissioner Baffa is talking to option four. Is that correct, sir? Four would be recommend this request to rezone the former school site from R1 to PDD R2 be denied.
Correct.
And you're suggesting that?
Yeah, my suggestion is, is if we went ahead and changed this from private, or from public semi-public to future residential, then if we've already moved it into future residential, then it's going to be used for some type of residential use. Why don't we go ahead and recommend the change from the R1 to the PPD R2? Because they're going to need the R2 in order to change the existing school location into the apartment complex for use. If he doesn't have, if the application's not an R1, then they can't change it into the apartment complex.
That's correct.
So we're saying we're going to change it to R1 and then let it sit there?
Yeah.
For what reason?
To appease the petitioners.
Are the petitioners going to buy the property?
No.
Then we'll, then I don't understand why we wouldn't go, why we wouldn't let the person that's looking to purchase and develop the property and maintain the current property that's there, why we wouldn't allow them to continue.
It's a good point. It's just that I think that they're going to protest our decision.
And they have that option to protest the decision.
Yes.
Our decision is, is looking at the city as a whole, what makes most use for the city. And as I've said on this commission now for over a year, one of the things that I heard repeatedly over the first year is that we want to go back in and we want to do infill for existing areas. We don't want to tear down existing buildings. We had one that was a two-story house that was damaged by fire. They needed to get it rezoned. They couldn't get it done. It's now torn down and is a vacant lot. So you have a developer that now wants to go into an existing, nice building, getting historic tax credits, he's not going to change the appearance of it, and put it into use so that families can live into it. And I would agree with Mr. Lenkowitz's comments earlier, that a lot of people feel that apartment complexes are low-end. When I first graduated from college, I lived in an apartment for multiple years, because that's what I could afford as I was getting started. And I didn't trash the place.
Commissioner Lenkowitz, I think that's a very good point, and I'd like to mention as well, when I was in college and when I was in transition between college and my career at the time, I was, and honestly, there was a time later in my life, between marriages, I had to live in a multifamily. And I think there's kind of this general blanket description of apartment dwelling during this process that is not flattering and, to be quite honest, not fair to people who live in apartment buildings. It's just an assumption that, hey, they're going to come in and they're going to, they're going to wreck the place and crime's going to go up. And I do think there are some examples of that, depending on property ownership and management styles. But I don't think this project fits in that category.
Yeah, Commissioner Olson, I don't either. I mean, I look at Roosevelt Lincoln, you know, I went to middle school there. Mr. Lenkowitz's father was one of my teachers at that point in time. And they could have torn that down and did something completely different with it, but they went into senior housing with it. And it is a nice structure in that area. It's still maintained, and I anticipate no less with this area, that the how, you know, the school itself will be maintained for those people that are living there. So it still makes it a nice area as part of that neighborhood instead of walking. I mean, we could allow it to sit there for another two years with a fence around it and weeds growing up, and it's starting to crumble. It's not going to make the neighborhood any nicer.
Commissioner Lenkowitz, actually, this entire conversation has made me think of a, and I'll just do a brief summary of it, but it's called the broken windows theory. And basically, it's a theory in sociology and criminology where if you have a structure, and in this case, we have a very nice neighborhood of historical significance, and you have a structure that sits vacant, and over time, it becomes maintained to a lesser extent. Windows break, weeds grow, it becomes kind of a tell in the neighborhood that says, okay, maybe, maybe it's okay for things to not be maintained. It sets kind of a precedent or a launch point for the degradation of a neighborhood. And I would actually argue that this project fits within the confines of a lot of good things, and they keep that structure intact, and they're going to keep it within the confines of the existing square footage, they're going to re-point the brick, fix the windows, but it's really not going to change the exterior appearance and the historical significance of the structure itself. So it seems to fit into a lot of, you know, into a lot of pigeonholes that we're looking for. But again, that is my opinion, but.
I agree, you know, and it could be a historical building too, and infill, and maybe I'm overly sensitive to the petitioners. But no, I'd like, I don't see anything wrong with apartments. You know, 40% of the neighborhood is rentals anyway. So I mean, you know, the same thing could happen in an apartment as in a rental house. So, you know, I just worry about what the petitioners would say.
Commissioner Gilmore with a question for staff. Have we done any studies? I know in the packet here, there's the residential density comparison. Have we looked at the surrounding fabric of the neighborhoods to determine, I would assume those are low density, correct?
The difference in our comprehensive plan, we have urban residential and suburban residential, and the primary difference is density. And the urban residential areas generally imply smaller lots and mixed one and two-family dwellings. So the typical suburban-type subdivision that the planning commission would see would have a density of two to five units per acre. Part of that is just a reflection of larger lot sizes and more spread out development pattern. In the center part of the city, there's a tendency that the lots are narrower, that the houses are closer together. There has been, and they're farther north on Santa Fe, as one of the callers mentioned, there was efforts to stop that by downzoning farther north on Santa Fe. But there are a number of the older homes on Santa Fe that did get converted into rental housing and into duplexes, and the R2 zoning is partially a reflection of that. And so the, the primary difference is that if you have R2 zoning and you have sufficient parking, you can take a dwelling and turn it into a duplex or two-unit dwelling place. And in R1, you're limited to a single dwelling place. So not all of the surrounding property that zoned R2 has duplexes or two-family dwellings. A lot of those are single-family dwellings, but a number of them have been converted to duplexes and even to, to multi-dwellings. But that is, that is the primary difference, and the density of the homes per the size of lots and side yards and all is higher in this part of Salina than it is on the, in our more suburban edge subdivisions. So even though the pattern is predominantly single-family, the, the houses are closer together, that there is a greater density. But you're talking about, again, we're, at this point, the only thing that is being approved would be to have up to 15 units on this two-acre site. And if there is a desire to increase that density, the developer will have to come back with that plan, and it'll be evaluated on its own merits.
Commissioner Gilmore, again, my concern is that originally, as plotted, there would have been 14 units on this tract of land. And so with the plan currently, we're looking at putting all 14 of those plus an additional unit on less than half of the lot, with the potential to add more in the future. And so my concern is looking at the fabric of the neighborhood as a whole, and then all of a sudden, we have this spot of extreme density mixed in a lot of lower-density housing.
Commissioner Olson, I mean, part of it is, is because of the structure itself. I mean, it was a schooled, a school, so to be able to go back in and make use of that school, that's one of the things that were, is being proposed by the developers, to go in and make it an apartment, apartment usage, because that's typically what Dean Andrews at AVI said and shown earlier, that the majority of schools that go through go into some type of office building or apartment complex after they've no longer been used. We're not looking at making this now into a commercial property. It's still going to stay into a residential, which is still within the neighborhood that we have there.
Commissioner Gilmore, again, I personally would be leaning more toward option two, whereas we were to approve the zone change for the Phase One with the plan to hopefully move the future development area into more of single-family residential lots, again, similar to what's surrounding this property as it is.
So Commissioner Olson, so you're suggesting that the developer needs to go in and put in single-family housing on the rest of it?
Commissioner Gilmore, yes, just to keep, to reflect more of what's surrounding it. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me to have this pocket of higher density just because the land is there. I mean, I would see it more moving back to single-family lots as what's surrounding with this unique old school building that has been turned into apartments, rather than having two apartment buildings surrounded by homes.
Commissioner Olson, but it doesn't mean that there has to be another apartment building on the future land map. All that they're asking for is an R2 zoning, which could be a duplex. And the properties just to the east of that part of the future land use area is currently zoned R2. So if we go R2 on the, on the west side of it, and then R1 on the east side of it, now we have made a pocket. If you zone the whole thing as an R2, that whole property becomes use. R2 is going to be guided by what the current city codes are, height, setbacks, everything else. And since it's now set into a PPD, in order for them to come in and put some type of development, it's got to come back in front of us anyways, at this point in time, as a PPD. So before they can decide what they're going to, they want to put on there, we're going to have to take a look at it, since it's set at, if, since this point forward, if we're talking about the proposal, it's from the R1 to the PPD R2. So anything on the future land use is going to have to come back in front of the commission anyway. So I don't see what the reason of delaying it and then having to have another hearing on whether we should change it to an R2 later when they come up with a plan. Otherwise, what we're saying is, we're going to have to put it into a PPD and make him submit plans for single housing.
This is Commissioner Good. So if, if we did do the entire property as PDD R2, can single-family homes be built to the east? Is that allowed in, in R2?
Under the possible condition number four, it says that a final development plan for Phase Two of the future development area shall be submitted to and approved by the planning commission prior to issuance of a building permit. So in, in response to Mr. Gilmore's point is exactly why option two was provided to you. That what option two does is option two allows for the adaptive reuse of the existing school building, but preserves and protects the opportunity for the east portion to be used for single-family homes. If Mr. Olson's recommendation to rezone the entire site to PDD R2 is approved, the developer could still come back and submit a plan to build either single-family dwellings or duplex dwellings on that site. So it doesn't, it doesn't preclude that, it's just that the, what it, what it does is it preserves the, option two preserves the existing zoning as is, because there's no specific plan for the property. Whereas the option one allows the developer to know that the eastern portion could be developed with an R2 density that could include single-family dwellings or two-family dwellings.
But Dean, I just want to clarify, if option one was chosen, the applicant would still need to come back with a development plan for the east side of the property?
Under condition number four, and this, the recommended conditions here were, were based on what occurred with Roosevelt Lincoln, what occurred with heritage at Hawthorne, what occurred with reserves at Prairie Glen, where the, all of those projects were done in phases, and the planning commission only approved Phase One at the initial hearing, and then the applicant had to come back with their plan for Phase Two at, at a future time. So rezoning the site to PDD R2 for this entire thing, if, if there's a plan to build single-family homes, to build duplexes, or to build another apartment building on that site, that would have to come back before the planning commission, and there would be notice and an opportunity for neighbors to be heard.
So I think it just, this is Commissioner Good, it comes down to how restrictive do we want to be? At first, I was leaning towards option two also, that we hear a lot that we need affordable housing in Salina, and that seems like that'd be, the east future development would be a good location for affordable housing. And then it does say that we don't want the entire facility, or I mean, entire property to be apartment buildings. And then a two, I wanted to comment what Commissioner Baffa said. I really do appreciate the community getting together like they did, and, and it, it does make you, you know, pause and think twice about all this. And it is just really admirable, I guess, the, the concern and the effort that went into getting the petition. However, for these other reasons that have been stated from a practical standpoint, I do see that this historic building needs to have something done with it. I even think that that's the sustainable thing to do. And that, again, I see the need for such a building in Salina. And I don't anticipate the negative fears, I guess, that I've heard. So that is why I, I am supporting the PDD. It's just rather, whether it's option one or option two. And I can see option one gives us more, gives the developer more flexibility, and no matter what, the public will have a chance to comment in the next phase.
Commissioner Olson? Yeah, I mean, and since it is a PPD, then it is going to have to come back in front of us. I would make a motion that we change the zoning classification from, from R1 to PPD R2 for the property.
Commissioner Lenkowitz, I'll second that motion.
Could we see if there's any more discussion before we?
Could we see if there's any more discussion before we?
Do we have anybody in the queue?
Give it a moment.
Okay.
Or even among ourselves?
Yeah, I think you're.
As it relates to the motion and the second, does, does that include the recommended conditions in the staff report? And does that include Mr. May's request to have the maximum building height be 35 feet instead of 25 feet?
Yeah, I would say yes on the 35 feet, because it's part of the R2 anyways. I think there's no reason to restrict them from anything else that's in an R2.
Well, that's, I think that's standard in residential R1 as well.
Right.
We do have somebody in the queue.
Yes, we have a call from 8138.
8138, hit star nine, please, and please turn down any devices that you have, and don't be on speakerphone, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we just need you to identify yourself, please, and your address.
My name's Dan Peterson, and I'm at 948 Highland. So one thing I'm not hearing, as you're deliberating over this, is the safety of that intersection. I, I see that intersection, I can see it right now from the house, and nothing's been addressed with that. For them to say, oh yeah, the architect said this is the best place, that doesn't look, that doesn't mean that's the safest place. So I'm disappointed that I haven't heard anything about that. And also, to notice that went out to the community was for that restricted building height, and now you're saying you're going to change it. So I don't feel like that should be done in this, in this case, because the public does not know about that. But most importantly, I think the safety of that intersection is a major issue that, and a red flag that everyone seems to be overlooking. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you again for your comments, and we appreciate your concerns.
Commissioner Gilmore here. As far as the building height goes, that's only going to impact the future development, because the first phase is already built. And so that was, as far as I'm concerned, the building height, that's something that would have to come before the Planning Committee, again, for approval before the building permit was even offered. And so that would actually be reviewed at that point as well.
So Mr. Chair, I just want to kind of clarify, because you have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, we do.
So.
Yes, we do.
So I, and that's, that dialogue takes place amongst commissioners once those motions have been made. So just to clarify and make sure everybody's on the same page, and if not, it's, now's the time to change that. Commissioner Olson's made a recommendation to approve the requested zoning change from R1 to PDD R2, and the proposed site development plan from Lowell School Site Subject to any conditions and limitations the commission deems appropriate. You're recommending those conditions, as noted on the following page, with amendment to Item 1B, with that height restriction going to 35 rather than 25. Is that correct?
Correct, because that's the standard height for an R2. And again, if it's, any plans are going to have to come in front of the Planning Commission, again. So, yes.
And Chair Linkwitz, you're seconding that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about what motions are on the table.
Thank you.
I was just going to call attention to the Planning Commission to condition number five. And under condition number five, it basically binds the development of the site to be completed in substantial conformance with the approved site plan. So that, the, absent any action modification, whatever through this motion or this action, you are essentially approving a site development plan that has the parking here with access to Republic. So the, the condition number five is what refers back to the, to the site development plan, and if there is any desire to modify the location or the alignment of that proposed parking area, you would want to do that as part of this action. Otherwise, you're saying that you are, you are recommending approval of that site development plan. That relates to Mr. Peterson's question.
I understand. I mean, does that merit some further discussion, I guess, is the?
Commissioner Gilmore here. I believe it does. I've actually driven down Republic multiple times, and this intersection is an oddball as it is. And if we look at bringing additional traffic in or off of Republic at this location, I do see cause for issue as well as reflection on that. I can see it causing major issues.
Commissioner Linkwitz, I'm definitely open to that option. Maybe need to modify that accordingly.
So one of the unique features of a PDD is Planning Commission having the ability to make those suggestions. So I think maybe the question is, if you're recognizing that there are concerns, how do you see having those solved? Is it a multiple exit perspective? Is it the general location of the parking lot?
Commissioner Gilmore here. I think the issue is the access to and from Republic. And so ideally, I think that we should see the access to and from either Highland itself or Beloit. I know Highland would be an issue, because that's going to be closer to that intersection as well, and that is where I see the issue at, is in the intersection itself. So ideally, I think access would be to and from Beloit.
This is Commissioner Good. Can people leaving the property only make right turns and then entering, you can only enter from eastbound, east, yeah. I mean, that's a potential solution.
That's a good question.
You're talking about use, use of traffic control, either signage or devices or whatever to address that? Unless you, it's been our experience that unless you specifically geographic, geometrically design that, that the, it's pretty hard to reinforce that movement through arrows on pavement or signs alone.
Right, you're only sign.
So the, I think, one of the things that was pointed out in some of the correspondence is that if, if the driveway connection was to Beloit and not Highland or Republic, then many of the in-and-out trips would not have to deal with the Highland and Republic intersection at all. So in other words, if, if you had access point here, people could come out on Beloit, take Beloit over to Santa Fe, and not even have to use that intersection or interact with it. And that, that was just something that was pointed out in some correspondence that was in your, your packets.
This is Commissioner Good. I did appreciate Mr. May saying the reason they put it on Republic was to minimize the traffic on Beloit.
So that suggestion is part of the motion?
That's still to be determined. We're still hammering that out.
Yeah, Commissioner Olson, I think that's still what we're discussing, but I think.
We have somebody in the queue.
Well, it's, if you've moved on to the discussion of the, of the motions, and you closed a public hearing, you may want to make that announcement, otherwise we do have an individual in the queue.
So this is, and, pardon me, just the protocol for this, we're still kind of working through, obviously, the COVID situations, we're all kind of, you know, playing it by ear. What's staff's recommendation in this situation, or should we just? I apologize for putting in that spot.
Rule that we should all know, it's, it's much easier to enforce when everybody's here in person, but once motions are made and discussion is happening at the board level, hearing, public commentary is done.
So we're done, then?
So you're done.
Okay, that is fair.
It is up to the chair's discretion if you want to pursue this comment, but in general, once the motions are made, it's, it's you guys kind of hashing this out.
Commissioner Linkwitz, and that's on me. Apparently, the protocol, I kind of deviated from, and that's, that's my oversight, and I apologize to whoever this caller is, but I think we're going to just close, close it down. We have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, motion Dan seconded, so I think we're at a standstill as far as public comment.
And in the moment, with a motion on the floor, you have discussion currently related to access and parking. If a formal amendment's going to be, need, need to be made of the motion, it can either more than likely be done through a friendly amendment. So we just need to get down to some kind of specifics, if that's something the board chooses to do.
Commissioner Linkwitz, can it be as vague as it needs to just be brought to, brought to us before it's approved? Or do we need to be more specific about how this is laid out?
I'm looking at Mr. Andrew.
It would not be, it would not be good to leave it, leave this meeting without, the presumption is that if you take the motion as it is, you're approving the site development plan as, as proposed. The motion is to recommend approval of the zoning change and the proposed site development plan for the Lowell School Site. So if you could have a friendly amendment to that motion, to approve the zoning change and the proposed site development plan, with the site development plan being modified to relocate the parking, or you can choose not to make that modification. I just wanted to bring to the commission's attention that the, the time for addressing that is now, because what, what would occur is that this is the conceptual plan that you would be approving when they go to actually develop the site. They would submit a more detailed plan with driveway locations and widths and all that, which staff will review. But if you don't do anything in your action today, staff doesn't have any authority to say, well, we as a staff think you need to move it to Beloit, because you have, you have not taken action to do anything different today. So this, this is the proposed plan that's in front of you, and you can approve it, recommend it for approval as submitted, or you can recommend it for approval with a modification being made to the orientation of the parking.
And I think that gets down to the question of, in listening to the public and reading through the comments, with concerns related to parking, what is the concern? Is it the street that it's being affected? Is it the number of access points? Is it the general location of the access within the street? Because those, those are the types of things that, conditions can be added to specifically alleviate the concern. So I think kind of narrowing that down could be addressed this evening, and those are the types of things that are then enforceable as they develop.
Commissioner Gilmore here, and my primary concern is the access to and from Republic Avenue.
Commissioner Linkwitz, I think another problem is also the proximity to the intersection of Highland and Republic, being a kind of an offset or geometrically offset, you know, potentially could be a problem.
Allison, do you think you could go to the aerial photo, just so that, that could be, it probably is, you can see that more, more clearly if you. If you see this as the anticipated parking area with, with driveways, while this is a fairly good distance from here, if there is some close proximity to, to the offset. And so I think that was, that was part of the concern that, in some of the written correspondence that was received, was the fact that that section of Republic is narrower than other portions of Republic, and just the fact that the proximity to that offset intersection.
Commissioner Gilmore here. Would it also be above us to recommend they move the location of the parking just to the east of the building itself? I mean, I think that could actually be an opportunity that may appease some of the neighbors as well, in that they're not looking at a parking lot full of cars as much. It would be hidden by the building, more or less, and that could potentially open up for more lawn over there or something other use rather than parking lot.
Can we go back to that site plan, Allison? Commissioner Gilmore, could you indicate maybe then where you are looking to move that parking lot, or Dean?
Talking about moving it to here.
Correct, and it could even go all the way down to the Beloit Avenue there, directly to the east of the building there.
Commissioner Olson, if you move it all the way down to the east, then all you're going to do is move it in front of the people on Beloit Street. You're going to take it off of the front view of those on Republic and move it to those on Beloit. I guess my question is, is where it's currently sitting, wasn't that a parking lot initially used by the school teachers when it was both Lowell School and Salina Christian Academy? And if it was, then you had people parking on that parking lot area when it was actually active, and they were going in and out with all, with, I don't remember hearing an accident occurring there every day.
Commissioner Gilmore, I believe that was actually basketball courts. I think when it was a school, public school as well as Christian Academy, the parking was just on the street there.
So, Commissioner Olson, so that was a basketball court? There's a, there's an entrance off of Republic currently into it, so it had to have been a parking lot or used for some type of transportation coming in. If you look at the northwest corner of where that lot's at, there's an entrance into it currently. So it had been used as a parking lot at some point in time.
This is Mr. Andrew, and I, my response to that is that our, our records indicate that there has never been any off-street parking for either of the schools here, that that driveway was used for deliveries for the lunch program and things of that nature, but it, that there's no, no record of there being off-street parking for teachers at this location, that it was part of the play area and not, not an off-street parking lot. But the curb cut was for deliveries for the lunch program and other deliveries, but not for day-to-day parking lot. So I guess the question would be is whether any commissioner wants to offer a friendly amendment to the current motion that would be a motion to modify the site plan to relocate the parking lot, or to have it connect to Beloit Avenue instead of Republic.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Commissioner Baffa, I would do so, but I also question about the 35-foot height limitation. Does that need to be covered in the motion, or is that already included in the PPD?
Well, if, if it wasn't addressed in the staff report as a height limit of 25 feet, and it was just that development on the site should be subject to the density limitations and bulk regulations of the R2 district, it would have been the 35 feet for a single-family or two-family dwelling. But the, the 25 feet was put in there at the request of the applicant to limit it to 25 feet to, to try to address any concerns about building height.
So it doesn't need to be addressed in the motion?
Yes, it does.
It does need to be addressed in the motion if, if the motion is to adopt the recommended conditions and to modify, the, staff's recommendation was to limit the height to 25 feet. If, if that's going to be modified, it, it should be called out in the motion.
So Commissioner Olson, so that's why I made the modification off of the 25 feet to the 35 feet. When Mr. May spoke earlier, that was one of their questions, if they could have that removed, or remove the PPD. Mr. Andrews said that in order to change the PPD, we would need to have another hearing on that, because the current one is an R1 to the PPD R2. So they were just asking to give the rest of the same requirements as any other R2 with a maximum height of 35 feet and conditional up to 50. Which, again, would make it no different than any of the surrounding houses. Which again, would make it no different than any of the surrounding houses if they built on any of the other, on the east side of that.
So I would make the amendment to the motion then, that, that the developer should, or no, will move the access to the parking lot on, off of Beloit.
I'll second that. It's been motioned and seconded?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
That the developer will make the access to the parking lot off of Beloit.
So then, just clarifying, not requiring them to move the parking lot, but having access onto Beloit, and only one access, or having access both off of Republic and Beloit? Because right now, the way it's designed, it would have access off of Republic. You could add a driveway as you indicated earlier and have a secondary access off of Beloit, or you're limiting the access to just Beloit. And that, I guess that's my question.
Commissioner Gilmore, I would think that it would be limiting access to only Beloit.
Okay.
So Commissioner Olson, I would say leave the parking lot where it's at and add an access point to Beloit. Now you have two pieces, two points of entry.
Commissioner Lindquist, I agree with Commissioner Olson.
Commissioner Gilmore, the only thing that I see with having two access points is people are going to use Republic more frequently because it's more frequently used and driven on. Therefore, the access to, ooh, Beloit is a mute point.
Commissioner Lindquist, I actually don't think that's necessarily true. I can think of one property. People are going to go where it's more convenient. And this is obviously my opinion, but I do have some experience with multifamily dwellings and the parking infrastructure. The, if people are headed south, which there's a lot south of that location to head to, I think they will head on Beloit and then get onto Santa Fe or hit Highland. I mean, it's just kind of that path of least resistance methodology to life. I mean, if, I don't know about you, but my tendency, if I have a choice between more traffic or less, I'm, I'm headed towards less. And that's just my perspective.
Commissioner Gilmore, I, I agree with that, however, it's a lot easier to turn at Republic where there's a light rather than Beloit if you're coming against traffic.
So I get, Mr. Baffa, you were making a friendly amendment to the motion on the table regarding that, so I just want to clarify, currently, your motion is that access to parking should be off of Beloit.
Yes.
That is sole access.
But I also like the idea of moving the parking lot to the east too, and which would then almost force the access to be on Beloit. But that's not part of my motion, which it could be.
I do think the applicant indicated that engineering-wise, they had engineered the parking lot to be at this location, so I think that might be worth considering if we're moving the whole parking lot, if that's even engineering-wise possible.
Commissioner Lindquist, I'm not comfortable with, with forcing the applicant to do that. I think my comfort level would be, hey, let's do two access points. And back to the methodology of more options are better than, than fewer, and hopefully that will restrict some traffic flow onto Republic.
Commissioner Olson, I would agree. I mean, I, and I agree with what you said earlier. I, I'm one that will go the path of least resistance. If I've got to go sit and wait through traffic on Republic Street, I'll find another way into it.
Would it be beneficial if, for Public to have a right turn only out of that lot?
This is Commissioner Good. Is that something the traffic engineers, city traffic engineers would weigh in on?
Well, the, we may, some of you on the commission may be having flashbacks, but we had the site plan for the Popeyes Fried Chicken on South Ohio, and the Planning Commission limited turn movements out of the driveway on Ohio to right turns only. So no, no left turn onto Ohio is allowed coming out of Popeyes. But in order to do that, you, you have to design, geometrically design the driveway so it's not possible, you have to put curbing in and, and direct it so that, that is the only option. So if, if there was a requirement that only right turns onto Republic Avenue were allowed at that driveway location, then they would have to submit a plan that had a design that essentially compelled drivers to turn right only. So if, if you go to Popeyes, you'll find there's an island in the middle, there's curved radiuses that direct all the cars so that they can turn right only, and there's a sign there. And if, if you just had a conventional driveway and put up a sign that said, right, turn only, you're not going to achieve very high level of compliance.
Commissioner Lindquist, I do think enforcement of that would be logistically a nightmare, and especially since it's coming off private property. I just think that complicates the issue.
So, Mr. Baffa, this goes back to your motion that hasn't been seconded yet. And you guys, so just kind of, kind of putting all our ducks in a row, we got to clarify your motion. We need to figure out if that has a second. If so, then you guys are going to need to vote on that as a, as an amendment to the motion that's on the floor. So, Commissioner Baffa, you had stated at last that the motion is to amend and add a condition that access for the proposed off-street parking would need to be off of Beloit.
That would keep it simple, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Gilmore would second that.
You have a second? And this is to make an amendment to the motion that's on the floor, Mr. Chair.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the amendment?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
And this is for adding a access point off of Republic, or off of Beloit?
It is the access point.
So it's the sole access point.
So are we saying there's not going to be one off of Republic where the current cutout is?
Instead of Republic.
So at that point, do they have to cover in the cutout that's already on Republic? Because they can exit out of that way right now.
Yes. I mean, when they go to design the parking lot, they would have to deal with that.
Okay, so we know what the motion is, we're...
So we have a motion, a second.
And it's been seconded, so we need to vote on it. So those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Right now, we can also make another friendly amendment saying that we can put in a exit onto Republic. Is that correct?
We probably could have done it in that last motion.
I wanted to keep it simple.
I'm just running through parliamentary procedure.
More options are better.
Commissioner Baffa, what I would suggest is that you revise that motion and you, and if your second is willing to do so, to take a vote, and that that motion would be that the parking lot has access off of Beloit and Republic? You're saying you want two entrance points.
I'm so moved.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Mr., yes. Second would be Gilmore. Do you accept?
I would retract my second.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay, so as long as we have a second. So, made by Baffa, retracted by Gilmore, seconded by Lindquist.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, you have a motion on the floor.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, how many ayes? Three?
Four opposed.
And for four?
Four, four.
Okay, four opposed?
No.
No, four positive.
That's right, four. I think four did oppose.
Okay.
Do we need to roll call again?
Yeah, let's do roll call. Baffa?
Yes.
Bernhardt?
No.
Lindquist?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Gilmore?
No.
Lang?
No.
Good, yes.
Motion passes for three.
Okay.
So that would take the original motion you have on the floor, which is to essentially take Option 1 as described under Action Item Number 2, which is to recommend approval of the requested zoning changes from R1 to PDD R2 and the proposed site development plan for the Lowell School Site Subject to any conditions and limitations the commission deems appropriate. So whole site, commissions deemed appropriate are on the second page with two amendments, one now based on the motion by Mr. Baffa to have two exit points required for the proposed off-street parking, Republic and Beloit. And then the second would be to amend 1B to change the maximum height from 25 feet to 35 feet. That is your motion on the floor, Mr. Chair.
So that motion has, has that motion been seconded?
Correct. You seconded, Gil, or Olson first, who made the motion.
Okay, I just wanted clarification. Thank you. So, motioned and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
You want to do a roll call again?
I would probably roll call this, since it's the final one.
Let's roll call it.
Baffa?
Yes.
Bernhardt?
Yes.
Lindquist?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Gilmore?
No.
Lang?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Six, one, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yeah, I would like to make a motion that we take a recess.
How many minutes would you like, Mr. Chair?
Folks, how many, ballpark 10, would that work?
Yeah, 10 minutes. That would have us coming back at 6:55.
Sounds good. Do I need a second on that one?
Probably.
Seconded. That clock is three minutes fast.
Okay. Are you good? Okay, you're good with the camera guy, too.
Okay.
So you are on a break, 10 minutes.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Yep.